We have all commissioners present, so we have a quorum. And I would like to ask at this time if everyone's had an opportunity to review the agenda? Or do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda that we need to incorporate into a resolution to approve?
I didn't note any.
Okay. So we don't have any additions or deletions that we have noted? Can I get a resolution to approve the agenda as stated?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the meetings of April 23rd? And if so, can I get a resolution to approve the meetings?
I make a resolution to approve the minutes for the meeting of April 23rd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting dated April 23rd. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have the claims. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills from May 7th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills of May the 7th, 2019. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Department reports. Y'all help me out here if I'm overlooking anyone, but I think the sheriff would be up first.
Yep.
I had to excuse myself, I gotta go speak somewhere, so I didn't bring my glasses down here, so. Alright, first, I'd like to request a resolution for Jeffrey Brown to go from full-time position back to a part-time deputy.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, accepting the resignation of Jeffrey Brown and moving him also to a part, from full-time to part-time deputy effective May 6th. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, can you give me this information? Mr. Brown, he's going from full-time to part-time?
Yes, sir.
Is this, has anything to do with the pay that he doesn't have to where he can work two or three different jobs?
Well, basically, in a way it does. I mean, he has a construction company and he's having to go where the money is to try to flourish that business, you know? He's gonna stay on part-time with us, he said he wants to do that, but he just has to go do that to make the money.
Thanks, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Oh, next would be the same thing for Deputy Eric Smithman. Eric Smithman wants to go from full-time back to a part-time position.
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Eric Smithman as a full-time deputy and resume as a part-time deputy, effective May the 6th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to transfer $4,066.20 from line item 52100-553, improvements of motor vehicles to 52100-116.
I make, I'm sorry. I make a motion to transfer $4,066.20 from line item 52100-553 to 52100-116, overtime pay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I just, I sort of wondered, for motor vehicles, did they not get an extra vehicle? Or how's that money sort of left over? Or why is it there and not used if it was in the budget?
Well, our budget was cut by bare, you know, by bare bones as we could get.
I'm just talking about, they, it's coming from motor vehicle, you said, was it supposed to be to buy new vehicle wheels?
Well, it's for maintenance and stuff of vehicles. Right now, we're basically broke.
Broke.
Yeah, we're basically, yeah, we're basically broke now as far as overtime pay. So, and I've got five months left to go to protect the citizens of Chilton County, so we're doing the best we possibly can to remedy the problem. And it's probably gonna get a lot worse for us over.
Joe, that, to buy vehicles is in the commission budget?
And Joe, I apologize to you for moving so quick, I didn't get an opportunity for discussion.
That's fine.
I'm just trying to push through, I apologize.
Alright, will we get a resolution on that? Take it here. Alright, I'd like to request a resolution that Adam Geisler be approved, be hired as a part-time corrections officer.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next, I'd like to request a resolution that Barbara Bieber to be approved, be hired as a part-time corrections officer.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to hire Barbara Bieber as a part-time corrections officer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next one, I'd like to request that Brendan Martin be hired as a full-time corrections officer at the jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next one, I'd like to request that Jacob Borden be approved to be hired as a part-time corrections officer at the jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next one, I'd like to request that Mason Manley be approved, be hired as a part-time corrections officer at the jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And the last one, I would like to request that Waverly Powers be approved, be hired as a part-time corrections officer at the jail.
So move.
We have.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank Sheriff.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Alright, guys. I don't see any other department reports unless I've overlooked something, and y'all correct me if I have. So, we're on to Commissioner Mims?
I would like to make a, I'd like to make a resolution to kind of head the IDB board in, or the IDB in a, in a direction, give them a little directive. The only way we're gonna be able to do that is to get a letter sent from our chairman, and I would like for the letter to say something similar to this, and if the commission will agree with me, or give me a little leeway here. I would like to make sure that we're moving the IDB forward in the progress of our farm center. If they find that the members don't have the time requirement that's required, would they, would they step down and let us put somebody in that can handle the time requirements for the meeting? We need this NEPA study done as a priority, and we need a master plan paid for and done as a priority. So I'd like those things to be included in, in the letter. And I would like for that letter to give the chairman a little leeway. He's on the agenda for the IDB meeting this coming Thursday, and he's gonna go and talk to them and kind of feel them out and see where they're at. And if he feels like after that meeting that it's necessary to send this letter, that he would have the leeway to do that. Is that something we can do?
So move.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have, that's a resolution that you're offering, Matt, or just some general guidance?
Well, just some general guidance. I mean, that, unless I need it in a resolution. Okay, that's what I would like to suggest.
Well, what I would like to do, if y'all will allow me then, is I'll just go and, because out of respect for these awesome people that have given all this time, let me just go and talk.
Agreed.
And just tell them, they're an autonomous board, and we'll just share with them what our wishes are and.
Just make sure we're on the same page.
And maybe what they need, if they need anything from us.
That's right.
And what we need to do.
Or if they want to make the board bigger, you know, we'll add more members so they can meet their core more easily.
Right, right.
Whatever we need to do, we'll make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I don't mind doing that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Caden?
You know, I just, as we discussed in our work session, I'd like to get some, get a committee put together where we could start looking at future use of the old DHR building, come up with some ideas, possible, a budget to work with to renovate that building once DHR is in their new one.
So, are you proposing a resolution?
Well, I'm asking if that's, if that's okay with the commission, I'd like to do it as a, as a resolution.
Well, I think it's imperative that we do it. Joe, aren't your duties over the buildings other than the courthouse?
Yes.
I think Joe needs to be involved in this with you, Alan, if that's what you're proposing.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to also be on that list.
I would say that we don't need to appoint a committee. I think that Alan and Joe need to reach out to some people to help with them, to bring back recommendations, and if you want to serve with them, you can ask to do that. But if we appoint a committee, if I'm not mistaken, that committee is gonna be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and I'm not trying to circumvent that, but if you're gonna go take a venture out to visit DHR, you don't need to have to post that, that meeting for seven days. So, so we will have a, a non-official group that can explore recommendations to bring to this committee, kind of like we did with the roundtable that looked at funding.
Got you.
So I would ask that we not do that in a resolution format, so that you guys are not constrained by having to put a seven-day notice out to have, you know, a field trip to the DHR building. Does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense. You can kind of do it like, like we did that, where you can appoint somebody, not in a resolution, just appoint somebody as the, as the chairman over that, look after that committee, and let them get them some people to work with them.
Well.
That's what we did.
We've got that in Joe.
Yeah, I was.
So Joe, you officially, or unofficially, or however you want to do it, reach out to Alan, and y'all figure out after the meeting who y'all want to serve with y'all, and then y'all kind of come back and offer your suggestions to the.
As long as it's just three commissioners, y'all do what you want to do.
And it's not a committee, just for the record.
It's just a roundtable. It's nothing official, because there will be no action taken, it'll be just recommendations.
This time next year, be your quit.
Right, and as Alan brought out in the work session, for those of you who were not here, that building is gonna be vacant, and whoever we move there is gonna, is gonna have to have some remodeling, and that money will have to be appropriated in our budget as long as we're trying to get out ahead of this and decide what departments fit it best and what the renovations are gonna cost, so we can start doing some planning. But if that's okay with y'all, that's the way I would like to move forward with it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Our first item is, we discussed in our work session, the district court judge speaks, he's gonna bring us some drawings and stuff on doing some changes in his courtroom, approved by the approval of the fire marshal, so we'll have to visit that at a different time. The second thing is, it's been brought to my attention, and I, just for the record, I'm not a smoker and I'm not a vapor, but I used to be a smoker for about 20-something years. We have a slight growing problem with vaping and from our, maybe some employees and some our citizens, I've had complaints on both sides, that vaping in, on our county, in our county buildings, not county property. And I'm gonna ask for a resolution that we do not allow vaping on our county, in our county buildings. This day and time, like I said, I've reached out to people who do vape, and that you can just about put what, not gonna say put what you want, but you don't know what you're putting in that, in some of these things. With the, with the way that this is transparent, you know, the word I'm talking about, that we need to get ahead of this, I believe, and that's gonna be my resolution, that we do not allow vaping in any county building.
Second.
I've got one question. Will, will our handbook cover punitive, how you gonna handle it? That's what I'm saying, if they're caught doing it, how is that gonna be remedied? Does our handbook cover that?
Well, our employees, hopefully will, will respect that, and if not, we can address that in our handbook, but hopefully our employees will expect, respect that.
I agree, I'm thinking more of the citizens.
The citizens, you cannot come in that courthouse and smoke, so what is the, what is the?
Same thing as smoking.
Same thing as smoking.
Just making sure that.
And it's just, it's not a, it's not a, I'm not, and I don't want nobody to think that I'm just going, you know, let's pick on the vapors or whatever, you know?
No, it's a hazard.
If I choose not to smoke or vape, that's me, and if they choose to smoke and vape, that's them, that's prerogative. But not everybody wants to do that, I don't guess, I know I don't, because I have seen people that vape, and if they enjoy it, hey, so be it. Look like they're on fire sometimes, and I have been tempted to get a fire extinguisher and put them out, but, but they don't, they enjoy it, and that's prerogative. But not everybody enjoys that big cloud coming out of the sky, looks like a cloud that fell out of the sky, so.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, we did.
I did.
Okay, we have a motion, okay.
We're in discussion.
Alright, good deal.
But.
I think my biggest issue with that is, you've had years and years and years and decades of study on secondhand cigarette smoke, you don't know what secondhand vape's gonna do. So, you know, you got babies in and out of this courthouse, and children, and even adults, and you know, the elderly. Just do the right thing, so.
I'm gonna get cancer, I want my own, I don't want to give it to them.
There you go.
So that's my resolution, we got a second, so.
Any further discussion?
I do. Does this have anything to do with any other type of tobacco, chewing tobacco or anything? Or just vaping?
Shouldn't be all tobacco.
It's just a question.
Well, it's a question we need to address, I guess.
We already have a policy against smoking and chewing tobacco.
They can't smoke in the building.
Cold, snow, all of them should wait till they get outside.
Is it all tobacco products and vaping? Would that be better?
Well, he said he already have a resolution for tobacco products and smoking, is what Mr. Caden says, is that right?
It's just a clarification, vaping is smoking.
Yeah.
Well, we need to post signs if we're not gonna allow vaping, because apparently the public thinks it's okay.
Yes, I think so.
I just wonder if they, I just wonder if the security will let them through the door with one of those things.
They wouldn't let me in with a coffee cup. No liquids, seriously.
Well, Joseph, I'm.
I'm serious. I mean, this is against the rules, and that's a liquid, so what, I don't understand what the difference is.
Well, that's a metal product.
There you go.
I didn't know, I didn't know if they'd even let them in the door with it.
Well, we are addressing employees too, not only just citizen employees.
Yeah, a lot of employees come through side doors, they don't come through.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Langston?
This is gonna be a little long-winded, Ms. Sylvia. I would like to give, I'd like to make a motion to give our administrator authority to draft a letter to Renasant Bank, Attention Matthew Foster, Account Number 60-0007-017. Hereman Parnell to sign the letter to transfer funds to Marion Bank and Trust upon review by our council, only because of the protected fund that is involved in this.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Steve made the motion, Matt, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Do you want something, Alan?
I was just gonna ask a question, we can redress that later.
Go for it.
Well, I was gonna say, do we need to put in that, you know, the way that fund is set up now, we are receiving the interest, should we, in that resolution, should we leave the interest and let it roll over?
Well, the way I thought of it, transfer that fund, that's the account balance at this time. That brings everything.
And then we'll have to decide if we're gonna take the disbursements on a quarterly basis, or?
Yes. And I talked to Ms. Sylvia about that, and she said she would prefer to get it annually. Are you okay with that, Ms. Sylvia?
Okay, well, let's make that a part of the resolution, Ms. Sylvia.
That need to be part of the resolution.
Okay.
Is this, this transfer to Marion, that is in the form of a certificate deposit?
It's going into a certi, a certificate deposit. Resolution should also include authorization to sign the signature card to open the account at Marion. There'll be a corporate resolution required for that.
On the chair of the vice chair, is that correct?
And for the, for the public's benefit, Commissioner Langston has put in nearly a year's worth of work reviewing this, and he's found a, an investment tool with Marion Bank that would almost triple the average return that the county has gotten over the past three years by moving this money. It will be in a five-year CD with an option to withdraw all of those funds, or some portion of those funds, one time during that period at no penalty. So if interest rates go up, we can withdraw and reinvest. If they go down, we stay there, but it will almost triple what we've gotten on average for the last five years, and he's put a lot of work into this, and we're very appreciative of that.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
So, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, before we move on to the administrator, is there any public comments from the commission that you guys would like to address that I may have overlooked?
Strategic plan that we worked on in 2018, the presentation is on May 16th, from being at Chicago, November 12th, June 6th.
Okay.
That's the one we canceled, is that correct?
Yes.
Due to weather.
Yes, of course, according to the weather, it's about all.
When is that?
Let's just plan this meeting if y'all want to have.
When is that? May 16th.
Okay.
Joseph, I have something for you to get.
Okay.
I talked with Tony about this today, I've been very frustrated with what's going on on County Road 51. Wiregrass has not been back, and this is the third week that they've not been back on not doing any work. And I, the first week, they claimed that the plant was down, and so they weren't able to get any asphalt. They have no excuse for last week, and as of today, they have not started work again. They are under liquidated damages, they have 30 days to do this, do this project, and they are under liquidated damages, $25 a day, and Tony is, is going to insist on that, they are gonna run over probably a week if they don't, if they ever get started back. But they've got a lot of work going on the interstate, and they're kind of like a, a lot of these trunk slammer companies out there, they go get a job started so they can draw, get a draw, and then they'll pull off of it and go to another job. And that's pretty much what's going on right now with ours. I know we have no control whatsoever over this, other than the liquidated damages, because this is run and operated by the state of Alabama, they bid it out, they oversee it, they look after it. But it's a reflection on us as commissioners, because this is the county road.
The public doesn't know that we're not over the project.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm, I'm very, very frustrated with Wiregrass. I mean, they, we have given them a lot of work in this county, they've done a lot of roads here, they've done a lot of state roads here, and we're being treated like redheaded stepchildren.
Any more comments before we move on to the administrator report? Okay. Go for it, Ms. Sylvia.
Please, please look at me.
I'd like to request a resolution to reserve the big courtroom upstairs for the GOP on May 20th, 2019, at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
What time, man?
5:30.
A motion and a second to allow the reservation of the big courtroom for the GOP meeting on May the 20th at 5:30. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution authorizing the Chilton County Administrator to terminate tax collection services contract and to authorize the Alabama Department of Revenue to administer and collect lodging taxes levied by Chilton County, Alabama.
Can I ask a question real quick before we move forward? Can we vote to terminate that, or are we voting to give them notice of termination? Does that, that contract require a 30-day notice or 60-day notice, or?
It's the 90 days.
It's 90 days under the state statute.
State code, yes.
But when you give that notice, that's it, there's not, there's nothing to do once you give the notice. Okay, so, so we're actually voting to terminate or to give notice of termination? Both. Okay, okay. So we, she's asked for a resolution for notice and the beginning of termination.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Request a resolution to permit Michael Littleton with Legal Shield to contact our employees as their work schedules allow, to inform them about the Legal Shield product.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, the floor's open for discussion.
I got a question about that, because we have had issues in the past of being able to contact these people, they're wanting, they like to go out on the job, and they're not allowed to go out on our, our job sites to do this, they would have to either meet them at the morning, in the morning when they come in, or in the afternoon when they leave, because our insurance won't, won't allow them to go out on the job sites where they're at.
Ms. Sylvia, are they asking for a payroll deduction for this service?
Yes, it, it's an option of payroll deduct or pay direct.
Okay, so, so what I would recommend to this commission, that is if we authorize this, that, that we authorize them to do a direct pay and not a payroll deduction, we're trying to bring payroll back in-house, and this, this puts more work on our payroll clerk. And we have continued to allow it, and we're building this portfolio of deductions that our payroll clerk has to keep up with and ensure that we deduct and pay the people who are owed.
Or stop.
Or stop, and it's, it's a burden for us to do, now it's a service for our employees, I'll give you that, but it's a burden for this commission office to keep up with those things. And I'll give you that recent, for instance, where we had a hire whose retirement was not automatically deducted, and it didn't, he didn't know about it for six months, well then he comes back and says, "I don't have the money to pay six months," and we can't match it unless he pays it. So, you know, these things happen and mistakes make, are made, and then we're responsible for them in some way, shape, fashion, and, and I'm just saying, if we're gonna continue to do these things outside of the basic medical and supplemental insurance, that they need to be direct pay, in my mind. Do y'all disagree with that?
I agree.
I agree, I agree, and once we, once we bring it back in-house, we need to start looking at all of them.
If, if, if we're gonna do this, we need to look at these companies that are asking us to do this to compensate our payroll in some way for their collections. I don't, I don't think that's out of, out of the realm of, because it's burdensome. I don't, I don't think that's out of, out of the realm of, 'cause it, it's burdensome. When you go to set an employee up, you gotta set an item up for everything they sign up for.
That is true.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I just want clarification, he is not to be allowed to come during the workday on the property?
Uh, well, like, if they're out, say that he wants to meet with the motor grader operators, he can't go out to the dirt roads where they're grading roads, they would, and, and probably need to get with the department heads and let them set up a morning, maybe twenty minutes in the morning, and just meet with everybody, and do it at one time, and, and, you know, those that was interested, then they can contact him, and, and, you know, set up a time that he can come and meet with them at home.
We'll, we'll do it, yeah, 'cause if we do it during the hours of, of, of a workday, we're gonna pay them to come listen to a sales spiel from him.
Right.
So it needs to be done while they're on break, lunch, or after a workday.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, Gerald.
Please.
Good answer.
I mean, you, when you're talking about several hundred employees, and they spend thirty minutes each with this guy, we spend a lot of money paying our employees for him to solicit something to them, and it's not just him, it's everybody. So we have a motion in a second with, with those, or, can we amend those motions, and the motion in second, I'm sorry, to reflect these requests?
Who made the second?
Yes. Whatever, whatever you say.
And I amend, I made the resolution.
Who made the second?
Who's second, me?
Greg.
Greg.
Greg made the motion.
Greg made the motion.
I amend my motion. Second, I, I amend my second.
Present it.
Present it, amend it.
Okay, all right, I know that's complicated, but I think those things need to be done, and going forward, we need to keep that in mind.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We have one nomination for the Board of Equalization, are there any more nominations?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to nominate somebody, Jeremy Hicks.
Jeremy?
Hicks.
Okay, we have two nominations, and there are three spots. Um, how would y'all like to continue, would you like to vote on these nominations and leave, leave it open, or would you like to leave it open for another week, and let's try to find another nomination?
Let's, let's go one more.
Okay.
I've, I've been talking to somebody.
Okay, we'll, we'll table this. About the RIA boy, where's your RIA?
I'd like to request a resolution to, um, pay an excess bid to Herschel.